Hey, Jason.
Hey, guys, ready?
Yep.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Good evening, sleep, rise, grave, and for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Over here, convening commissioners' public meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you and praise you for another day you've granted us. Continue to seek and trust in you for all things. We know our vision only reaches to the horizon, but yours is beyond what we can see. Your understanding of knowledge are far more than our minds can comprehend. This is why we ask you for infinite wisdom and knowledge. We know that you provide us victories, that we praise you in setbacks, that we can learn growth. Through it all, you sustain us in challenges to be stronger, more like you. And Father, on this morning, we pray that you'll guide our nation for a nation that lacks your guidance will fall. We've been through many difficult times as a nation, and today's no different than in the past. May we learn from our past, resolve our differences, listen to each other with a kind compassionate ear, and work together for one nation under God. These things we humbly bring to you in your name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
Morning. This time we'll convene our commissioners' public meeting. And ask for approval of minutes of the previous meeting.
I will make the motion.
I'll second. Paul, favor side.
Aye.
Aye.
Any public comment, agenda aims only. Any on line?
None online.
Okay. All right, reports. Vicki, Cory.
Good morning. Presented for your ratification or invoices due through February 26, 2025, to be paid on February 19, 2025, in the amount of $1,618,373.96. Out of the general fund, that's their 5.33%. Other grants, 32.81%, RMS is .7%, and escrow is 31.16%.
Okay, motion accept. Counsel panel.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Fair side?
Aye.
Thank you. This time we recess commissioners' board meeting for the salary board, convene the salary board at this time.
The first item I have is to vote to approve the salary board minutes from the February 6th meeting.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Next, I have vote to approve the following salary board actions, and we'll do these one at a time. First one, delete one part-time victim witness coordinator adult.
Okay, motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Add one full-time victim witness coordinator adult.
Motion accept. I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, we're going to place one assistant district attorney position on hold. The money that is budgeted for this position will be used to make up for the shortfall from the grant for the additional full-time victim witness coordinator salary and fringe benefits.
Okay. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I want to thank the district attorney and her staff for coming up with a solution to help pay for the shortfall. And we believe this is a good, good outcome. All fair side?
Aye.
And then, we have the DPS bonus structure, a temporary bonus structure, six-month period ending September 1st, 2025, will be put into place in the amount of $60 per ship for a salaried employee.
And this is temporary. It hopes that the shortage out there will be able to get up to full staff by September. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Opposed.
Thank you. This time we'll adjourn the salary board. And we convene the commissioners' public meeting.
Personal actions, Mike.
All right, good morning.
Morning, Mike.
Approve the following personal actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion of background check and all other employment conditions as outlined here in attachment A. Planning and community development, Jenny Pisiano, director, pay grade 14, full-time. $89,520 per year, 75 hours per pay period with an effective date February 16, 2025. In the adult probation office, Sarah Johns, EBP coordinator, slash acting pre-trial probation officer supervisor, this is a pay grade nine, full-time, $33.4165.66 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, effective date February 3rd, 2025. That is a compensation policy of 5% for fulfilling additional duties above and beyond her her position currently. Also, in the adult probation office, Kennedy Barr, AP2, union, full-time, $24.5346 per hour, 80 hours per pay period, effective date February 16, 2025. Pre-release center Riley Hoy, resident supervisor, union, part-time physician, $19.20 per hour, not to exceed 1,000 hours annually. Transfer date, February 16, 2025. Also in the prison, Nicholas Wagner, correctional officer, union, full-time, $20 per hour, 80 hours per pay period. Anticipated start date, February 24, 2025. And in the prison, Monica Laird, lieutenant, pay grade 10, full-time, $30.777.327 cents per hour. 80 hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, March 30th, 2025. And in domestic relations, Nathaniel Casper Miller, pay grade four, full-time, $15.465.24 cents per hour. 75 hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date, February 16, 2025.
Okay, can I motion accept personal actions?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any comments or questions?
I think it's important that we carry out that decimal point, six places, that.
It really is. It makes a difference.
That's vital.
I was doing what payroll says, so I'm gonna pay.
I was gonna say, I'll approve the .7773, but not that extra .27. But I won't say that.
If, if we can get bigger calculators, we could probably carry that out more, so.
I'd like to just take a second and congratulate Jenny and her promotion within the county.
Yep.
I'll second.
Yeah, she's got, yeah.
It's, um, it's always good when you can promote from within. And, um, yeah, we're happy. We hope she's happy, because we're happy.
Monica Laird is also a promotion from within.
Great, congratulations.
Congratulations to Monica as well.
Thank you. Okay, motion. That's why she got six decimal points.
Absolutely.
All right, what do we motion? Are we ready? Are you done? Do you need the motion or we vote?
We already had the motion and second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to action items. One, Nick.
For our guests, we're really not that formal. Especially one of us.
So commissioners, I'm coming to you for the payment schedule of the actuaro. I'm going to call it the ADEC for the retirement fund. It's the portion that the county puts in towards the retirement fund for the employees. And that is budgeted, it's $1,037,000. I had a conversation with the financial management team of how we should pay this. They recommend that we do it monthly, starting in April, when our cash flow is a little bit better.
And Nikki, can you explain to the public why this is so important that we do this because of what the state has not done with their pension fund?
Yeah, so when you don't fund it, obviously, then you cannot pay it. And I'm very pleased to say we're 98% funded, over 98% funded, which means that we can pay out all of our benefits to our employees who are retired and who are in the system actively, all of us employed right now. So 98% can be paid out to that right now. Our goal, obviously, is to hit 100%. We'll get there, but we just need to make up for that, which this is the county's portion of that.
Great, thank you.
So when you say paid monthly, starting in April, that's only April through the end of the year?
Correct, and then we'll have a new estimate for, for next year, yes. Depending on how our fund does over the year, that determines what our contribution should be on the county's side.
Well, thank you.
Yes.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
5.2, Kristen, are you on the line?
I am.
Morning, Kristen.
Good morning. 5.2 is the approval of a subrecipient agreement amendment number two with the Jersey Shore Area Joint Water Authority. These are ARPO funds that is to extend the termination date of their agreement from 3/30/25, so next, the end of next month, to September 30th of 2020. There is no change in amounts or projects, so it is just in the pickstitch.
Okay, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
5.3, Forrest.
Forrest. All right.
So my, my item today is a preventative maintenance warranty coverage for one of our central scanners. We have three of them at the county that are part of the certified voting system. We work them really hard. On election day, they do all the mail ballots. If we have to do a recount, like we did for the senate contest after the November election, they recount all the ballots, which was 60,000. So we run them real hard every election season. This is for four more years of coverage for one of them. The other two are already covered through 2029. This one's a little out of sync because we bought it later. But that's, this is the bill for that warranty coverage, and this is in the budget.
Okay. Thank you, Forrest.
Yep.
Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next?
5.4 through 5.7, Mike.
Okay. We're mine.
Good morning, Ash. Thank you, everyone. First item I have for you is vote to approve resolution 2025-4. That's just accepting the donation of some power tool equipment from Washington Township. It'll be used primarily by the pre-release center as they can work on projects out there.
Okay, great. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve the agreement with Diane Welch. She is the G K instructor at the pre-release center. This is just a readout of the amount of $7,000.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
Counsel side.
Thank you, Diane, for doing the GD programs very important. Having that's available for inmates. So helps better their lives. Thank you. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next item, 5.6, it's vote to approve the addendum to the agreement with digital assurance certifications and a $500 per year. And this is in regards to what we call the DAP bond, which is our vendor, where we have to store some of our information for, as part of the Federal Data Transparency Act. Preparation of their protocols that's going to be upcoming. They're requiring that they are going to have an operating storage database for us that we have to maintain for efficiency. As a result of those requirements, it comes with a cost.
It's in our budget, all right?
This one would not be initially, but it will be obviously moving forward. But there are contingency plans to help us set this sets. At this point, it's, it is what I call a minimal cost, but it is still a cost, it's $500.
Okay. Motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is vote to ratify the approval for the grant award for Lake County County Victim Witness Services Grant from PCC. That's an amount of $122,201.
Okay, definitely want to grant that word. Thank you, thank you, Abby. Uh, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, 5.8 through 5.12, Jason.
Yes, where is Jason?
Morning, Commissioner. I've come in, approve the amendment to the agreement of the quality air mechanical to extend the terms of the agreement till December 31st, 2025. All these items I'll be bringing for you today are, are items that are as needed basis, plus this is simply getting us some time so we can get the bid documents around to go out and bid for all these services again.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
5.9, amend the agreement with Topahaka Mount Spring Water extending terms of the agreement to December 31st, 2025.
What's that agreement for?
That is the water that we use here to drink, sir. We have bottled water, we have it for our customers. We also are at the end of the water line, and that's why we have, have people on staff that have their water quality training and stuff, because we're at the end of the water line. That brings up some issues. Figur and I both, we use, Figur use Topahaka as well, we use bottled water.
I'd like to ask for motion to table this.
I'll make a motion to table.
All fair side? Any discussion?
That's, yeah, I'm first, just while you're on table.
So I want to have more discussion on this because we have other departments throughout the county that pay for their own water. They pay for it out of their own pockets. Just want to have a discussion with Jason about this. We shouldn't have one being paid by taxpayers and other ones, everybody else is paying for your other pockets. Okay, yeah, that's fine, I'll, I'll make the motion, Mark.
I made the motion.
I'll second the motion. The table, okay. Jason, we'll be talking to you about it this week, please. All fair side, say hi to the table.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's table till next week.
5.10, approve the amendment, the agreement with Cummings Incorporated, this extends the agreement for six months. This is another service agreement for, as needed basis, for engine work if we need on our trucks.
And motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay. Next.
511, vote to approve the amendment, the agreement with Professional Petroleum Service Company, saying the terms, this is December 31st, 2027. This is the company that takes care of our fuel islands and tanks for everything, so we, and also the inspection.
Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
512, vote to approve the amendment to the agreement with Equipment Depot Pennsylvania Incorporated, extending the term to March 31st, 2025. Equipment Depot is used to service our forklifts and recycling center, will be going out to bid.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
513 and 14, Kenny.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
513 is an agreement with Icon Fire to replace the flow switch in the basement that is for a regular system, it's not operating properly.
Um, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
514 is to replace the packing around the outside stem yoke. It's a shut-off valve that moves slides in and out on the main equipment in the basement that is leaking.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Kenny, so we have a new elevator out here, all refurbished.
Yeah, looks good.
Looks nice. Thank you.
Does it move faster?
Oh, all right. That's your check. I will take the steps now anyhow, so it doesn't matter.
His doctor told me to take the steps. And he listens to everything his doctor says.
Don't.
There are candy bars and walk the steps.
We want him around, so we're making sure he takes the steps.
Uh, 515, Monica, you on, on the line?
Morning, I'm on the line.
Morning, Monica.
Um, 515, if they vote to approve amendment number one to the subrecipient agreement with Montorsville Borough for the reallocation of CDBG funds for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $1,837.30. So this is reallocation from a project in Montorsville that has been completed called Curve Cut Space Core. We are reallocating it to a similar project, just with a different updated name, Montorsville Curve Cut Space Base.
Okay, thank you. Motion accept.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, what it, the, the project had a budget and it came in $1,800 less than what they budgeted. So they're taking the $1,800 and rebudgeting it for another project.
Yeah.
So that's
That's correct.
in, in layman's terms, that's what happened. So yes, I'll make the motion.
The next round of coop cuts.
Right.
Okay, motion accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good day.
You too.
516, Malik.
Free Malik.
Seeking your approval for the amendment to the agreement with Barton LeJudas. It's just a no-cost time extension with the consulting for the regional solid waste plan till December 2025.
Okay. Motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
517, Kelsey.
Where are you, Kelsey?
Morning, commissioners. 517, I have for you the MOU with Heveron Township for a fair 2015 acquisition demolition of one property.
Okay, motion to accept.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'll second.
That was one of the ones involved in the flood.
Um, this has been a severe repetitive loss property, yeah.
Okay. All fair side?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, comment?
Please, Commissioner, sort of announce a statement.
Yeah, I'll start. I apologize that I'm, I'm reading this statement. I, I did not want to miss anything. I am making the statement, the following statement on behalf of the three commissioners on the landfill, as I am the commissioner that oversees the facility. There have been several news articles on the landfill losing money. These articles incorrectly have blamed prior board of commissioners, landfill staff, and our controllers' office for these losses. None of these are true. Let me start with an apology to our staff and landfill, for then learning of the evaluation from the news media and not a statement from our office. This was not fair to them. I reiterate that these losses are not caused by their job performance. Next, I would like to clarify, the losses are in no way created by the controllers' office. Controllers' office oversees county spending with checks and balances, ensures any payments are made legal and justified. It is not their responsibility to manage the profitability of department or a business unit within the county. The lawsuit between the former commissioners' board and the controllers' office did not create a loss. It created a lack of reporting due to waiting an outcome of what the commissioners' financial team and the controllers' offices' responsibilities would be. As soon as the current board came in and accepted the court's ruling on responsibilities, I assure you, the retired controller Krista Rogers and her team went to work getting the banking balanced and reporting audited. She immediately created a timeframe to accomplish these tasks. Under the current controller, Nikki Gutshell, these timeframes are still in place. And we will be up to date by September of 2025. In the meantime, the commissioners needed to rebuild their financial management team to get work on the responsibilities needed done within our office. In early of October 2024, the commissioners were formed by retired controller Krista Rogers and our new financial manager Maya Toon. The county had run out of money to get through the end of the year. Together, these two offices discovered shortfalls in our finances. One that stood out was the landfill. We are combing through years of profit and losses, and the current controller and financial management team are determining if we're operating at a loss or a profit. During this evaluation, our landfill manager Jason Yorks and his team of managers are working diligently to find ways of cutting costs and making the operations more efficient. This will be ongoing, along with the evaluation of the direction of the landfill over the next 10 to 12 months. In closing, I want to let the public know there is no one person or department to blame. You have the word of this commissioners' board, we will do what's right for the taxpayers in the end, after the evaluations are completely done. Um, we do still have our controller and our financial manager here, if either one of them would like to make a statement in regards to what I just said.
The first, obviously, I'd like to apologize to Nikki for the misrepresentation that was done in the paper. Very disappointed in the articles that were done, because they did not represent my voice of what I, I put out there. It was all done in writing, and it was misconstrued and misinterpreted to spin a story. And that's unfortunate, because the only one that suffers is all of us here. When I say a team, we, we talk my team, I always say financial team. Controller's office is part of that financial team and always will be. We've worked diligently, like you said, for, over the past year, to work on the major issues in this county. What I think people don't understand is that, you know, the delineation of responsibilities between both of us. You know, people don't understand that there's a budget, and then there's finances, and I think people intertwine them because they're two different functions, but they work together, and that's hence why we're a team. So, you know, when they come to me and we're talking about budget, I'm talking about that budget. But when we, they started intermingling the general ledger and all those things, that's the team, and that includes the controllers' office. So, uh, obviously, we've talked, you know. So obviously, we've talked, you know, that's not how it went down. I did reach out to the news agencies and said, I demand an apology. I want you to fix the article, I want you to represent what I stated, because it's not a representation of how I am personally as a person. And that's not how I want to represent the county or her office. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I want to second what Mr. Sorkin read. You know, when we put the teams together beginning of the year, you know, we put timelines on things. Krista came in and had a plan, you know, March for twenty twenty four, September by twenty twenty five. Their offices worked night and day to get things caught up. You know, things have been turbulent for the past several years, we had lack of staff. You know, when I came in, there was, how many accounts do we have? Two, three? Yeah, two. And I believe one time the county had, I think Tony told me nine. So, you know, there's been a lack of staff and, and so we're very confident in teams we have now in place and to write the ship and make sure that that we don't make any rassish decisions, like we said about the landfill. This will be a year, a year in the making, decide what avenue we go with the landfill. But we have to make sure it's profitable. And we're not sure at this point whether it is. So, but it's no reflection on the employees or whether they work hard. I've been, I've worked very, very hard. We have to look to see how we're spending monies, making sure that, that you can only afford what you can afford. And, you know, I often wonder about the equipment over there, you know, whether we're buying expensive equipment. And those are things we're going to be looking at in the future and going forward, so. But Commissioner Sorkin summed it up very well in a paragraph, exactly how we, how we feel. We were upset at the article last night also that it was pretty plain on people that don't deserve that because it's not their fault. So, we have the team in place, it's going to rate the ship, we're very confident in those employees, so thank you. I mean, you want to say?
Yeah, I agree with the part that we do think we have the team in place that's going to rate the ship. But, you know, in our, in our county, you know, every now and then, just like everywhere, there are hot button topics. And for a while, it's the airport and, you know, right now, the landfill is a hot button topic. And when, when, when we ran, when Mark and I ran, we would come to the meetings and we would listen and everything. We, the landfill makes money, the landfill makes money, the land, all this stuff that the landfill spends money on, it's because the landfill is profitable and makes. And then we get to the point and we start, now we start digging, but our team starts digging and they're like, no, landfill doesn't make money, the landfill is losing money. And our first, wow, everyone keeps saying it's making money, I was losing money. And I was just somewhere at a function the other night and a friend of mine comes up to me, he starts talking about the landfill. And when, when you get this, when the public was fed, landfill is making money, the landfill is making money now. And now we find out the landfill is not making money, the landfill is losing money, the fair question is, whose fault is it? It's a fair question. And, you know, as everyone says that, well, it's not their fault, it's not their fault, it's not their fault, it's somebody's fault. And it's not an unfair question for the taxpayers to say, why were we told this if it wasn't true? And if it's not true, why are we operating a landfill that loses money? And whose fault is it? And those are fair questions to ask. And as, as we dig through and I don't think it's, I, I agree that it's not one person. It's when you look, you know, relationships are complicated, big government is complicated, and we're not that big. We're not like federal government or state government. We saw multiple, you know, we have hundreds of employees, we have multiple departments. It is complicated and, and how, it's just kind of like everything else in life, how did we get to where we got to? And when you follow the path through it, it's understandable how we got there. But, you know, it's, it's an interesting time. We're the only land, we're the only county in the state that has a landfill. And maybe now, you know, for a long time, we thought that we were, we'd outsmarted everyone else and we have this entity that's making money. And now we're at the point where maybe like the joke's on us and we, there's a reason we're the only one that has a landfill. But we're, we're still trying to figure it out as to what exactly the profitability is or the losses were. And what are, that you're going to drop a fight up. And what our best path is going forward, and that's kind of where we're ending. It's not like how we got here so much as to how do we rectify and what, how do we make the best decision going forward? And that's what we're using twenty twenty five. But it is, the landfill is a topic of discussion right now and it will continue to be until we come up with a path that either we're going to run it and make a profit, we're going to lease it and have somebody else make a private sell it, we're looking at all options. But at the end of the day, like Mark said, we have to do what's best for the taxpayers' dollar.
So I was informed this morning that back in, I think, the late seventies, early eighties, there was probably about five thousand municipalities that had owned landfills. According to D P, there are forty two municipal wastelands in Pennsylvania, eight are publicly owned. So there's a reason for that. So we had to look at what we're doing and
So we're down to forty two, so we were told fifty, but there's fifty left in the state, we're down to forty two.
Yeah.
And what was it, only eight are owned by municipalities? And I think most of those eight are actually under an authority, not under county municipality.
Right, we're the only county ones that are, they're publicly owned. And this is from records from D P.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's just, it's interesting, this is part of the challenge of, of running government. Just kind of, you know, with each department, that's our, one of the departments, and we've just got to try to figure out what's best. And we're, we are excited about our financial team going forward. We do think we have the right minds at the table to figure this out. We, we don't see it as, as, as a mountain that's unscalable. It's, it's different, we've never had to do this before, but we think at the end of the day, the county is going to be stronger, whatever. And because of the information that we have and because of the team that we have making the decision going forward, we think the county is going to be stronger. We're going to come out the other side.
It's not just status quo anymore. So, you know, we, we ask a lot of questions, our financial team asks a lot of questions. It's not because we think people spend money incorrectly, just about to make sure we can justify it on other paths.
I can just, you know, follow up on that briefly. I mean, as, as the three of us ran this, this last time, just, you know, a short year and a half ago, the comments we all heard from residents of like Humming County is, spending had to be cut. Please don't raise my taxes, I can't afford to live as it is. We heard that from everybody, we're working on that, and that comes with a lot of pain. And I think that, you know, it's a continual clarification to not only the staff of like Humming County, but the other elected officials in like Humming County, that there truly is no additional monies. We are, we, we literally rolled into the end of last year and squeaked through, barely being able to pay our bills. We currently are living on a loan that holds us over until tax dollars roll in in March and April, which immediately then gets paid back and we continue to move forward without the cuts we've made and the changes we've made. And I know they're hard for everybody, but requesting a PO as opposed to just buying and then asking for a PO. Making sure we're buying from the, the least expensive place. If it's the exact same item, you've got to let our, our procurement team do what they're here to do and evaluate what's going on. You've got to let our controllers office understand why they're paying a bill. It's got to be legal, it's got to be checks and balances to everything we're doing. Some of that fell by the wayside because, you know, twenty years ago, everything was, you know, bad and happy. Today, we can't have that, we got to change the way government's operating. We were elected by people that asked us to do that, and we're going to hold to that. No different than what people are asking the entire world to do right now. Government spending, reduce it, reduce it, reduce it. Our agenda is going to be that, you know, and as we've all keep saying, we have the team in place. We are thrilled with our controllers office, we are thrilled with our financial management team. We are thrilled with the staff that works for like Humming County that have all come to us with cost-saving ideas. Every department, not just one, every department's come to us. But we find the, we still find the challenges that, well, you got to be lying to us, there's got to be money, I just need this one item. Now, going to look at everything and we're going to find it for the cheapest price.
Get away from the decade of, or decade or more of everything being dumped into the general fund and being paid out of the general fund. And, you know, a landfill has their account, everybody has their accounts. It's separated, but it all goes into the general fund and, and got to get away from these capital expenses, paying them out of our cash reserves. You know, if they're generational, they have to go out on a bond. Because we're depleting our cash, our cash reserves, our fund balance, we complete that, that's what's happened. But where we have to go out on a trance, because we have a low fund balance, because we're paying for these capital improvements that are huge. For instance, the Coroner's Building, it's, you know, that's one. The H V A system, HVAC system that's coming up. Every time we go out on a generational project, we've paid that out of our fund balance, that's depleted debt. And then we have to go out and get a tram, and doing that over and over and over, and that's just not good financial. So
Yeah, I just want to add to that, you know, I didn't have up there, but, you know, what people don't understand, this is all inherited problem.
Yes.
No one's created, like today, just woke up and like created the problem. We're all working diligently to try to fix the inherited problems, and it doesn't come overnight when it comes to, like said, a lot harder, but we all just want to do what's best, likely for the county and our taxpayers.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? Any other issues?
You got any?
Okay. Public comment. Morning, best visitors, thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
We have a school project or something, you guys are here today?
Merit badge.
Merit badge.
Merit badge, awesome.
Nice.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
Great. Well, thank you for being here.
Some governments are more formal than we are, we're kind of, you know, a little lackadaisical up here.
Let's think you debate something a little bit more, because that's what they were looking. We need a different, different opinion on it than you.
The meant salary cap is way too high.
Yeah, we agree on that.
There we go, let's debate.
Yeah, I mean, we, we just don't, we have some good discussions, but we don't argue very.
We don't need to argue, we just need different opinions on one issue that then they can pick a side on. I mean, they, there's a couple of things that we can work with, they can give us.
You got an issue that you want us to argue about? Because he takes the wrong side on a lot of issues, so if you just bring one up, there's a good chance.
Well, to give you an idea, like we, like as, so a lot of the topic of conversation today has been the landfill. So that's where all, all your garbage goes. So, the discussion is going to be over the next ten months. Do we sell the landfill? Do we make an authority of the landfill? Or do we have a management group, or do we keep it status quo by working on the efficiencies? So those discussions will happen amongst the three of us. We may all, because we haven't sat and discussed it, we may all have three different ideas. I might be sell, he might be authority, and he might be a management team. So we, those will be discussions that'll happen. Yes, to Commissioner Messina's point, we won't argue, we will discuss.
Do you have any friends, just like you and your brother, never argue? Never.
Do you have any friends you just discuss? Do you have any friends that think they're always right? You know anybody like that? This guy here. This guy here.
Hey, this guy, good money to always be right, that's why you're here.
Just don't be wrong.
But historically, our county has owned things, we owned a, I always call it home, a nursing home.
A nursing home, yeah.
And we sold it, because at the time, they decided that was the best option. To own a golf course, that they decided to get a management team, because we were running it and losing money now. And the management team is now making money, and that was the best option. So, depending on each entity, you know, there's not one, you know, one size doesn't fit all, we have to look at all the options. But we know landfills make money, you know, or they would, you know, people make money in the, in the garbage business. So we have to figure out, is it, is it viable for us to make money doing it ourselves as now that we look at it, we reorganize? Or is that not the best option? But other people make money, so it's not like a magical, we're not trying to invent the wheel here, like people make money at it, so we're just trying to figure out how they do it and why we're not. But our best way to profitability.
We have a county farm where the only county that has its own county farm. And it wants to be utilized to the best of its capabilities. So the county farmers retired, we put a committee of farmers on it, five of them. And they're bringing recommendations to us about how to utilize the county farm better, make it an educational experience for kids. And they're bringing us ideas, and so we can be, utilize that farm and make it more productive. So thank you for being here.
And I can tell you two guys who never got merit badges.
He came and spelled scouts. Larry, come on up.
Good speller, actually.
Larry Staub from Montgomery, and I, I would just wanted, on the, on the landfill issue, there's another side of it, that everything has been about money. But it's also really one of the most, I don't know when I say well, well-designed and operational type place. I was around back in the seventies when this whole thing started, and it was quite controversial. They had an organization called O U E, Organizations United for the Environment. And my mother-in-law was the president of that, so I was involved in it. And it was, they had, I mean, it was hundreds of people that were in this organization. And they were adamant that this was going to, if, if we can't get rid of it, well, it better be the best, best, most, you know, sanctified, whatever you want to call it, it could possibly be. They literally watched every aspect as it was being developed. So it really, really was, as they were making it, the best possible landfill you could imagine. But then for it to actually become more profitable and, and as others were shutting down, it was extending. So then when they had to continue it on, the house that my in-laws lived, then we took it over to take care of them, and now they're gone. But as a result of that, the county now had to require for, to us, that if anything would happen to our water supply. We get, once a year, they come in and do this incredible, it's like twenty pages long describing, I, I don't know what, but it just says up, my water's good. They check everything, I mean, they just go as deep as you can imagine to make sure that, that we are not being, you know, in trouble or anything. My wife has complained at times because of the lighting over there, and they will adjust it. I mean, they listen to us as neighbors and they want to make it as best possible. So, I mean, when you're thinking about the landfill, yes, it's, it's, you know, the, the money issue, I don't know anything about. But even as part of the fire company, we do all kinds of things together with, with, with them there, with the local fire companies, we do, you know, things together in practice so that when what happened, what a year ago in the summer, they, you know, they, boom, they were on top of that instantly because of the connection. So they are a good community organization, they take care of their, what they do, but they're also very aware of what goes on. And I, for Jason and his bunch, they are fantastic. From, from a neighbor's standpoint, we have no complaints.
That's good to hear, because we, we've heard that, that they're very conscientious about their neighbors, making sure the dirt's down so the dust doesn't get built up across the road, that they're being transferred back and forth. The smell, obviously, you know, you don't get odors, that was one thing.
Yeah, so fine, we don't get it.
No, Digger came in, he was concerned about that initially, across the road, he says, there's no odor whatsoever. He's pleased with that, so those are the things that they're very conscientious. those are the things that they're very conscientious about. The litter, making sure that the litter doesn't get blown out on the highway. They cleaned up. They have the fences. So they, they take all the precautions. They follow D P regulations right to a T. And so they want to make sure their neighbor, you know, this is a, this is a major decision because we have small businesses, the haulers in the area, very small garbage routes. We, we want to make sure that they're protected. Whatever we do, we want to make sure everybody's protected so that whatever decisions in the, in the long run, that somebody isn't hurt from it.
I just wanted to give them an attaboy from, other than the money part of it, from a, from a
It is a fascinating physical plan over there. And as they described it, it's one big science project of where, you know, with the leachy runoff and the gases they have to collect it. It's not just a big pile. They don't just dump trash and cover it. There's a lot more to it. And it is, it is a fascinating physical plan.
Definitely. Mr. Stat, I appreciate your comment because i- if sale is the answer, we got to be able to, you know, the government obviously has to operate slightly different. You can't just put up for sale. You have to go through a process. Um, but looking for, if we were to sell the right partner that would be part of our community is, is essential to the three of us anyhow, that it can't just be sold. It's got to be a partner that's going to work with us, work with, you know, the Clinton Township, uh, Fire Hall. I don't think it's really any compensation or what they do for us at that landfill. So there's a lot that you look at, if there was a private partner, that they really are part of our community, not just some business that bought it.
Thank you.
So we got to watch that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Any other public comments? Morning, Jack.
Um, I'm here about the, the landfill as well. Uh, but maybe, I guess that's the bottom line is the landfill, but uh maybe the broader picture of the fiscal um situation at the county. I'm just going to read over my notes so that I kind of keep things in order. But this is the way I see things that in November twenty-two, the deputy director of the fiscal department, she left. In November twenty-three, the fiscal director of RMS left. Uh, somewhere in there, we hired a gentleman to run uh the fiscal department. And I know he was there in twenty-four because he did the, the budget preparation for twenty-four. And he was gone this year. And in the meantime, the county promoted the chief purchasing officer to be, and I might not have the title correct, but be the director of fiscal services. Um, and I'm not, I'm kind of confused as to how that really works out. Uh, December twenty-four, prior to the final budget, I wanted to get a copy of uh the CAFR so I could see maybe how the cash flow of the county was doing. And I went to the controller's office. And the, the CAFR, from my recollection, it's usually done in May. And this was, I think, the first week in December. And it hadn't been done. And, you know, it was explained to me that there was too much turnover and the staff hadn't gotten to it yet. But at the same time, I'm thinking you've got two very experienced individuals and a controller of twenty years and a deputy that's probably about the same. Um, you know, I would have thought that, and they could probably do that, make, do up that CAFR in their sleep because they're so familiar with it. But, you know, where was the leadership to, to get that report done? And in January of this year, the controller leaves. And then, you know, a few weeks, or two weeks ago, or whatever, uh, comments come out that RMS operation is under potential sale or management company or lease or setting up an authority on it. I guess, you know, I, I think the, the process is at least from a, a citizen's point of view, um, you know, was the, was the twenty twenty-three audit complete yet? Is that done?
It is not.
It is not.
And we done three thirty-one. And I can assure you that the act part is not something you can do for sleep.
Okay, no, I know it takes time, but structurally, you guys, I mean, structurally, you know how to do, or, you know, I'm not pointing at you, but, you know, the deputy and the controller know how to get it done. And I would have thought that, you know, they could have given direction to have it done. And it, it was more of an informational piece than really an important piece, but I was just surprised you know, that it, that it wasn't that. When the prior RMS uh fiscal director was hired, at, at that time, I, I was a commissioner. And the discussion that we had was, you know, he was a pretty sharp guy. And we thought, well, if uh Ms. Johnson, when she leaves as the fiscal director for the county, the thing to do would be to try to get him in and put him in place with his knowledge of the landfill and, and of being one of the largest uh departments of the county, you know, that he could have learned the, the fiscal side of the county after that and had administered both of them. And you know, and I know during COVID, we read a lot about all the changes, the, the job titles, compensation being rearranged, trying to keep people. You know, it's hard to believe that, that the, the county didn't make some effort. And I'm sure you probably did, but I, I
I wouldn't say that, but to get
Can I stop you for one second?
Yeah.
I'll answer that. That individual, when there was a shortage over in the fiscal office, before you got here, in the meeting this morning, we had, we were talking about this. And there was at one time nine accounts with the county. We were down to two. Okay, we brought that individual over from the landfill several days during the week to try to help do both. And he couldn't do both. It was too much. It's too much. And at that time also, he, he wanted to go back to the landfill because that's where his expertise was. And, and Nikki, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because she was here at the time. He did the best he could do to try to get both ships righted, but it was too much for one person. So that idea you just mentioned, you were talking about possibly doing, we attempted to do that as a stopgap. We couldn't even do it as a stopgap.
No, I, and I would, I believe that. I mean, because my, I mean, my picture
That's a very smart individual. He's no longer with the county. He's with another agency in the city. And, and he did the best he could do. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say anything negative because he did the best he could do. But he tried to do what he could do with, between running a landfill and trying to help with the county with the books. Matt was here. Matt was with him on a regular basis. And uh, so that idea that you, you threw out there was used as a stopgap measure until we tried to get somebody hired, which we eventually did. That didn't work out because whatever reason.
No, I, I agree with you because I would, I would envision him being the top guy overseeing somebody in, in RMS and somebody in the county, working the county side and RMS, but his, his knowledge and yeah.
Plus, he was trying to get caught up on stuff and he was one, one person. He's trying to do several people's jobs.
And I, you know, and I, I know, at least I believe, uh, Jason York's um operationally, you know, he knows how to, he's a very, very good operational person. And he probably knows how to fix operational issues. Uh, but I think on the finance side, you know, he, he, he needs the guidance and you know, cash flow just seems like the RMS presents a lot of opportunities and, and at the same time challenges. Uh, but if we manage the uh cash flow properly, uh, I think the, the organization can afford to lose money uh for a little while. Uh, as long as, as long as we get it squared away. But we have to have, you know, uh, on the, on the whole big scheme of things, you know, we've got to have a fiscal officer who knows accounting, can rebuild the fiscal department and, and provide the commissioners uh with the information they need to make a proper decision. We all know the RMS workers, they work really hard over there. And they, and, and I'm sure something like this, you know, kind of makes everybody think, oh, you know, what, what's going to happen? As an enterprise fund, I think that gives the, gives the county the ability to use RMS to the county's advantage. The interest rate increase recently that the entire country uh has experienced uh six, seven years ago, interest rates were extremely low and nothing. And, and we weren't getting any kind of money off the forty or fifty million dollars that that RMS had to have set aside. And with interest rates uh this high, um, you know, we have to be picking up a, a million and a half to two million dollars a year uh off of RMS, just off the interest that unless it cha- unless the state changed something, I believe that we were allowed to use the interest uh for operational purposes. The recent land grant from the federal government, that in itself, you know, picking up all the acreage over there. I think that gives the county, the county a lot of opportunity to consider uh different things. And, and if I do recall properly, I, I think the federal government had a clause that said, you can't sell this land for four or five years uh after it's deeded to you. So you know, the whole topic of, I mean, it, maybe, you know, if you want people to know you're going down that route of thinking about it, but you know, the, the employees should be assured that, you know, it's going to be a number of years. You know, before anything happens. And, and I guess I, I just hope that the, on a bigger picture, that the county makes sure that its fiscal house is in order. Uh, so that you have the right information to make a decision prior to, to getting there. And those are my
Thank you. Jack, we can reassure you that the teams we have in place right now with the controller's office, the fiscal office are doing a great job.
And the, uh, the, the sale of the federal land uh could not happen until twenty twenty-six.
Any other public comments? Any online?
Um, there are a number of comments online, but it seems to be a conversation. So we'll just post that with the meeting.
Okay. Any other public comments? And we will be adjourned. We've completed our agenda and uh our next meeting will be on Thursday, February twenty-seventh.